Being called to order on this Monday evening, it's good to see everyone on this drizzly Monday. I hope everyone is doing well and that you've had a good weekend. The agenda is back here on the dais if anyone would like to grab one and follow along with everything that we'll be doing. The first item of business is to have our prayer and our pledge, two very important items. So I'm going to introduce Pastor Jerry Riggs. Pastor Riggs, if you'll come up to the podium there and following your invocation, then I'm going to call on Councilman MJ Hall, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So Pastor Riggs, thank you.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father in heaven, God, we come before you today, Lord, we thank you for your many blessings on us. God, we thank you for the community that we live in. And God, we thank you for each one of these council members and our mayor and the employees that we have here in our community. God, we just pray that you would be with this meeting tonight. But we pray, God, that everything, Lord, that is done would, in some way, that it would honor and glorify you. And, Lord, we just pray for wisdom in decision-making and, Lord, just for guidance in everything that's done here tonight, God. Again, we just thank you so much for all that you do, and we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Riggs and MJ, thank you for that pledge. I do want to recognize that one of our council members, Vice Mayor Wes Ellers, is not with us tonight in person, but he is with us on the phone, so he is out of town and has called in this evening. Wes, can you hear us okay?
Loud and clear, Mayor.
All right, very good, very good. Well, it sounds like you're having fun wherever you are. That's a good thing. All right, we do have the agenda before us, and Jessica does a phenomenal job each week of sending out that agenda along with the minutes and all of the information to support the agenda. She did that so that we can have that for approval and review prior to tonight's meeting. We do have several items on the agenda, though, that we're going to need to postpone. So Pete, how do we need to handle that? I'll look to you for guidance before we approve the agenda.
You want to take it? There, I don't know if there's going to be any discussion, Rob, so.
Mayor Council, you know, as you're aware, the ordinances, I think, you know, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Those have been presented to plan and zoning. We had some discussions about those items. And through the course of the planning zoning meeting and city council meeting, things have changed. Particularly, Councilman Folk brought up the idea of SA. We looked at that, determined that maybe conditional zoning might be a more appropriate means about which to handle that. One of the issues also is that initially, there was, you know, these acreages that we were going to annex was less than what we were actually going to annex. According to law, I have to give the county notice of any annexation of parcels. And my notice of the county, which I sent out middle of last month, does not then encompass all of this property. So I'm concerned that we're not complying with our notice of the county as required. Also, as we go through this idea of conditional zoning, that's not something that was really presented to plan and zoning. I think that's something that they wanted to do or were looking to do. I have drafted up a proposed ordinance for conditional zoning that I think I've sent to council over the weekend. The other issue that I have is certainly when we send out a public notice for our public hearing, we advertise those based upon the acreages that we anticipated annexing, which has changed. So my concern is, is that without having the proper notice of the county, without proper notice for the public hearings for the acreages that are going to be annexed and rezoned, and the idea that we're now looking at conditional zoning, I think that's something also that should be advertised as far as what we are doing. So with all those things taken together, I think that we're, you know, we need to postpone these. Now, that being said, I think that we're in a position, based upon the discussions that we've had, both the planning zoning and our workshop, to move forward, you know, with this quickly. I do have to give the county the 30-day notice, but I do believe within that timeframe, we can go ahead and get this presented, plan and zoning, we can get it back to the public hearing. Council can then, you know, consider workshopping if they like, or they could adopt it if, on the night that we actually have the public hearing. So we can move rapidly on this, but because we have some legal issues, that I don't want this to raise ugly head, so to speak, down the road. I think we need to dot our i's and cross our t's. We work the process, work it through, by the way, get that done easily within the 30-day timeframe once I get that notice of the county.
So we just need to, in essence, remove these items or postpone these items for discussion and voting for 30 days? Is that what you recommend?
Well, I think what we could do is, you know, because it looks like the actual public hearing and voting will be taking place some time subsequent to 30 days.
Right.
I would suggest we make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay.
But with the idea that we're going to be getting to this probably, you know, within, you know, shortly after the 30 days runs, I get the notice of the county.
The 30 days is up and we either do something on the 30th day or the 31st day.
Right.
That's right.
And have the public hearing and then a special call meeting.
Sure.
After and let's take care of it like that.
Right, okay.
And that's all doable.
Okay, so does everyone understand what we're doing? You clear? So with that understanding on items 11, 12, and 13, I'll need a motion on the agenda that's been presented with those items being postponed indefinitely.
Mayor, it'd also be number 14.
11, 12, 13, 14, okay.
Yes.
Keep the agenda as is. I got you, okay, okay. All right, so then the motion would be to approve the agenda or to not approve the agenda, make any suggested changes, accepting those four items, which we'll deal with when we get to them on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to keep the agenda as is.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you Johnny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wes, you good? Okay. All right, we also have the approval of the minutes. We have our workshop, our city council meeting, and then our budget workshop. So there were several meetings to review there. Do we need to make any changes or is everybody good with those minutes? Do we need to submit those? I've got a question, Jessica, if you don't mind. Is this, do we need to, we need to vote on the, I mean, have a motion second before I ask my question or can I ask my question now? On the, on the minutes for the June 21 regular council meeting, I did not see, let's see. I back up. It's in here, I'm sorry. You've got it. I was going to ask about the formation of the two committees, but it's in here. I didn't catch it the first time I read. Never mind, okay. My question's answered. I'm sorry. Okay. All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Good, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wes, you good? Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comments, and I do believe we have someone signed up for public comment. I see Mr. Hayward Fowler pointing at his head and raising his hand, and he has signed up. So Hayward, we'll turn it over to you if you'll just state your. Okay, state your name and your address and you're good to go.
My name is James Hayward Fowler. I live at 1018 Park Avenue. I am humbled to be in front of such a prestigious, wonderful board. But the mosquitoes are eating us up. I don't know why they're so bad this year. It seems that where we have reeds and bamboo growing in the alley, they are worse because they hold water, and water and mosquitoes multiply like you would not believe. Now, I don't know with protocol, and I don't want to break it, I don't know if you can give me an answer to what's going to happen there. But I just want to bring it to your attention and say that we're all spraying and doing the best we can. But we haven't seen the mosquito truck riding around spraying poison. Maybe that's a good thing, I don't know. But anyhow, long story short, we've got a mosquito problem. And we've got one more problem. I know in the historic district, and it goes as far as 20th Street, there is a red-headed blowfly that is everywhere. And I have been putting out bait traps for them. And I'm going to send each of you a video of my bait traps. They're that deep, and they're that deep in flies.
I have those too. You can send it to them. I have my own.
I'm singing to the choir, aren't I? But I just want to tell you, I know that y'all will probably try to do something about this. And my reason for being here tonight is just to give you information so that y'all can work on it. And one more thing that I will say, and I will say this very quick, we are receiving some patients from Coffee County Hospital into our hospital. And from what I can find out, that 90% of those people that have COVID, they are the ones that did not get the COVID shot. And the 10% of them that got the shot, they're doing pretty good. And that's all I got to say.
All right.
And thank y'all for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Any, any comment, Pete, on the mosquito truck? I know that's, that's not going to serve us, that the city's provided.
We have not been spraying. That is something that we did not plan for this year, but it's something I'm interested in the flies. That's the first I've heard of that.
Flies are terrible. They are absolutely terrible. It's everywhere.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
So anyway, I'll talk that over with Jeff and see if we have any, any type of things that we could address that.
Okay.
Spray it, and the studies that I've read, you can go through and spray it, it helps right then, and that's it. But we do have these tablets, I think if there's a body of water, we will provide tablets to put in them to kill the larva or the mosquitoes. But you can go spray, you'd have to spray every day if you ever think you're going to do anything about mosquitoes.
And I know our health department does promote the tossing, you know, if you have bird baths or, you know, potted plants, you know, make sure that you're tossing out the water, that does help, because that's where those larvae breed. But we will look into it, so thank you for sharing that, Mr. Fowler, appreciate that.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Are the flies at night or during the day or both?
Fly, the flies do not fly at night. Mosquitoes are terrible at night and day, but the flies, the flies are just working in just like hives of flies. I've never seen anything like it.
They're gone by about eight o'clock at night. But between five and eight, you can't be outside. It's terrible.
We've got a plague of flies, I'm telling you, we've got a plague of flies. I have to use that truck.
You're right. You're right. Just need a big fly spotter. It's terrible. But if you can look into that, so Jeff, put your thinking cap on. Okay, any other public comments? Does anyone else want to speak that maybe didn't sign up? Okay, all right. The items that are on our agenda are all items that we have reviewed in our workshop. We have discussed them, so we'll go through these very quickly. I don't want the public to feel that we're not discussing them or haven't discussed them. The first section of items is our consent agenda. That has all been presented to us in our workshop. There are seven items there. We can take those individually or we can take them all together. So I'll take a motion from one of the council members on how you'd like to move forward on the consent agenda.
I move we approve them all together.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have an item of new business. This is the proposed lease agreement for Farmers Bulk Supply LLC for operation of the Tifton Inert Landfill. Pete, you want to bring us up to speed on that?
Sure, and Ricky's here too if there's any technical questions. But we ran through, again, this is a agreement with Farmers Bulk Supply, who actually does our grinding of wood yard debris now. They're there 85, 90% of the time. This really does fit with his business model. It definitely fits with our business model because of our costs. So really is a win-win. This is something that I would highly recommend. It is a year contract. They do have their own equipment, they have all the responsibility. But then again, we're going to be tracking data, and we're not giving up the inert landfill or our permit. So it is something that is worth trying, in my opinion. In addition, I did talk this over with the county manager, and he does have a copy. But this is something, as administrators of the program, this is, this is a very smart move. So I'll be making some calls, making sure that the county's taking a look at this and if they have any input. But I recommend approving this.
Okay, so we did hear from the gentleman that owns that, and then he and Ricky did a nice presentation at our workshop, so I'll take a motion concerning that lease.
Permit for the, having to do the mulching? Do you have to have a special permit for the mulching?
When I say permit, it's permitted for a yard waste area. So the permit is via the state, so nothing is changing with that. We still own the property, the permit is in our name, they're just subleasing the inert landfill for us. From us.
You good?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any further discussion, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right. We talked at length about the city observed holidays at our workshop meeting, and Emily made a very interesting presentation. Pete, do you want to go over the budgeting process for that and what might work well for us in this situation?
Yeah, obviously with the new federal holiday, every, you know, all cities, counties are processing this. And this is a great celebration for the country and for communities. But it is in June, and this is something that came kind of late in the process. So it would be my recommendation that we just, we put this off until February, where we start talking about the next budget year. If it's your desire, which I think it is, we start talking that under our holidays. If you so desire, and we budget for it. And then if you, if you want to go forward with it, then we just make it happen in June. So this is something that we certainly don't have to do, because we'd have to go back and amend the budget since it's not in there. But I think it's, it's important enough, that's why I brought it forward. But I think it's something that if we just put it on for February, I think that would be well suited. And then it's timely, and then we could talk through that and make a smart decision then.
Okay, all right. Would y'all like to, like to do that? Or do you want to have, any concerns? You good? Okay, okay, all right. Since this is on the agenda, do we need to take any formal action or just move forward to the next item?
Again, I would just make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay, all right. So I'll take a motion to postpone this discussion. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Wes, you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. I know he's wanting to lie. Our resolution, our next item is the resolution amending the 2021 budget. Larry and Dana presented that information to us at the workshop. So is there any further information that we need to consider on the budget amendment?
Well, Mayor Council, the only, in your packet, again, we went back and forth with this. The only thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, everything is checked out with our revenues and expenditures. The Budget Committee did make a recommendation to bring forward $408,280 for this fiscal year budget to put towards our GMA retirement plan. So this is something that I wanted to make certain that you understood what we're doing. We're, we're taking that out of this year, this reserve, putting it to our retirement plan. For next budget year, which you approved already, it is budgeted at $1.8 million. So we are in check. If that's what you'd like to do, then, again, this is forwarded by the Budget Committee to really, you know, start working toward the retirement fund and making that very, very strong, stronger than it actually is today.
Smart, to me, it's, from a financial standpoint, it is the best thing we could do.
Was that the? Now I'm confused. Doesn't take much, I apologize. Was that an addition, is that an additional $400,000 or to make it an additional 800, or were we?
It brings it up to that 1.8, which is really the number we've been talking about.
Right, but didn't we already approve or discussed the 400,000? That was part of the 1.4.
That, that, yes.
So this is an additional 400?
It brings it to 1.8.
To bring it to 1.8? So our total increase is 800 versus the initial 400 that we talked about? Is that right? Am I, am I saying that correctly?
You're planning two different budget years. This is the budget year we just ended.
Right.
Brings it to 1.8. The budget we just approved for '21 is 1.8. It had not been that. And so that's the 400 I think you were talking about, that brings it to 1.8.
Okay, so it was already 1.4?
That's right.
That's right, and we're adding 400 to make it 1.8 for this past year.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, and that's coming out of reserves?
That's correct.
And.
Next year's budget, we're already, you approved $1.8 million in the budget for the retirement.
Okay, and our reserve is healthy enough to sustain that withdrawal?
It is. Again, it's, it is putting money towards a, you know, one of our most important plans, which is healthy. Again, this is way above and beyond what the recommendation is. But again, we've, in years past, have been behind the curve on retirement, on what we've, the whole entire plan has been funded. So this is something that, you know, we've talked about this for the last three and a half years, that looking forward, it's just strengthening our position.
That's why those numbers are confusing to me all of a sudden. I'm mixing up the 1.4 and 1.8, okay. Okay, okay. But the, the reserves that we have, you said they're healthy enough to handle, to sustain this, but they're in a, they're, but they're in an income-producing, they're in investment accounts, right?
Yes, yes, I mean bulk, but yes, to answer your question, yes. I mean, reserves are in good shape. Now, if anything ever happened next year or the year after, this is something that we could back off. This is real budgeted money, so if we ever got into a bad situation, we could back this down.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying to ask.
That's the beauty of this.
Yeah.
When you put it in and it's being invested, it's just, I mean, there's that snowball effect of your returns. And if something happened, we would not have to put the 1.8. It's, you know, we really should try to continue, because within, I'll tell you, four years, we're going to be in a situation that we can do what, what we need to do. And it won't, I mean, financially, looking at the budget, it makes a whole lot of sense and really puts us one step ahead to just cleaning up the biggest item that we have.
Right.
And that's, that's, you know, and you see cities that have trouble. You know, they, they're not funding their pension, and there, I mean, there's just trouble across the board. We're sitting here in excellent shape. And, and the reserves are.
That's right.
What auditors would say, you know, are good.
Okay, so this, this means our retirement fund is stable? It's, it's in good, good position then, is that right?
It's, it's more than that. I would ask the, you know, the question of why, why are we doing this? And again, you look back three and a half, four years ago, the retirement, the fund itself was very iffy. We were at 65, maybe 70% if that. And again, cities, Jack is right, cities sometimes they get into a money pinch, and they say, well, let's just cut it back, because really, in theory, the only, we're on a 10-year trajectory for GMA retirement. And what that means is that we really only have to put in $850,000 to be on this trajectory over 10 years to make the plan solid. So we're, we're doing in addition, in addition, in addition. That's the why. And again, you'll have a chance in, you know, two years, three years to define the why. Is when do we, how much do we accelerate? What percentage do you want to back off? Is there something that you want to achieve and then stop? Because really, the end game is if we get it funded and the markets stay healthy, then we really have a lot of flexibility in the backend. But most importantly, the employees and their pensions, which is still very, very important to many, have the financial security that City Tifton is not jeopardizing, that we're doing things with retirement fund.
Okay.
Yes?
And the other thing to that, to those, MJ wasn't here, but several years ago, we switched to GMA. At that point, we were putting 2.4 million.
Right.
To the pension.
Right.
So now it's 1.8.
Yeah.
But the returns, because GMA is so large and they can invest differently.
Sure. It's, it was, it was a good move.
It's just been a big win.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any questions over, on that? That's, that's pretty much everything then on the budget, amending the 2021 budget.
Thank you, no, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, I will take a motion concerning that amendment. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right. Now we are at the ordinances section of the agenda, those, we're now at items 11, 12, 13, and 14. So at this point, we'll take that motion. Rob, is that the appropriate way to handle that?
Since we don't have a date certain that we could postpone it to, again, I recommend we postpone indefinitely with the idea that as soon as I get this letter to the county, after that 30 days run, we go ahead and get this back in front of the council, get voted on.
Okay, so I'll take a motion concerning those four items.
So.
To postpone indefinitely, right? Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Councilman Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion?
I would just say time, yes. So we just, to reiterate what Rob said, just because the motion says indefinitely.
Indefinitely, it doesn't really mean indefinitely.
It means as soon as that 30 days is up, we're going to take some action, one way or the other.
Okay, you got that, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you. All right, we are running through the agenda rather quickly this evening. The next item is our board report. And we do have a couple of boards, you know, we do have our new policy, where we ask that the boards be, the applicants be interviewed by the boards that they're applying for. And the first item is the Historic Preservation Commission. Franklin Will is a new applicant. The Historic Preservation Commission has met with him, and they do recommend appointing him. There are two others that are seeking reappointment. That would be Adam Simmons and Ann Clayton, and they have submitted the appropriate paperwork concerning that. And the Historic Preservation Commission has recommended reappointing both of those applicants. So you have their applications in your packet, and we can act on those this evening if you'd like.
Make a motion to approve.
Approve those three?
Yep.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to approve Franklin Will, Adam Simmons' reappointment, and Ann Clayton's reappointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, the next item, excuse me, the next board member is the Airport Authority. We have one vacancy, Dr. Greg Anderson, and Jessica, his paperwork is in order to consider that reappointment tonight. Is that correct? Okay, okay.
You're on the board.
I'm on that Airport Authority, so I know that they would approve that. So if you'd like to, we can go ahead and do that this evening, or we can wait for an official recommendation from the Airport Authority, but he has been the chairman of that board for a significant amount of time and, and was very involved.
When does his, his runs out?
Is it? So we've got time if you want to wait.
I'd wait just, just for the process.
That's fine, we can do that.
Instead of a second guessing, saying, well, we thought you were going to.
Right.
Approve that, let's get it formal.
That's, I have, have no problem with that if y'all are good with that. You okay with that? You good with that, Johnny?
Yeah.
Okay, Wes, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I have the ability to individually appoint board members to the Tifton Housing Authority. And tonight I'm going to appoint two new applicants to that board. I'm going to be appointing Larry Memes and Randy Chambers, and both of their applications are in your packet. Now, there's no official voting that needs to take place on this, since it's my appointment. I'd like to just have the council's blessing, if you're good with that. I don't know if you'd call that a vote, Rob, or not, but, but I would like to appoint Larry Memes and Randy Chambers to those two positions. Is there anything else we need to do, Rob, concerning that? Just, that's it, okay? All right. Any other board report information, Jessica? Has that got everything caught up for the moment? Okay, very good. And again, we just, we do very much appreciate the volunteers in our community that serve on these boards. We cannot conduct the business of the city without you. So if you are interested, we have numerous boards that we appoint to. And if you're interested, you can get with Jessica, our city clerk, and she can let you know what the process is, what boards are available for people to serve on. And we just greatly appreciate the time and the energy that, that our citizens devote to serving on these boards. It makes our community a better place. All right, Pete, your city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call on Crystal to give a really exciting report that she's been working on. And obviously, part of your goals for this year, we talked in length about dilapidated homes and code enforcement. And Crystal, in our retreat, came up with a great idea, and I wanted her to share that with you and introduce you to somebody. Crystal?
Hi, Mayor Council. We have with us here Patrick Tucker. He is an intern with ABAC. He is a senior in the rural study. He is a senior in the Rural Studies Program. And while we have him, we only have him for about two more weeks and we are, we are using him to, to his greatest strengths. He is working on a blight inventory. So he's traveling every city street that we have and he's looking with very objective eyes at what is blight, what is not blight. And he's creating an inventory for you all so that we can come up with a strategy to assess what to do with blight. And I know one of the questions that he's had for me lately is, is this considered blight? And it doesn't seem bad enough. And I, I've, I've went over with him and we've been learning together. But just because it's not at the stage of teardown does not mean it's not blight. If it's overgrown and it looks like nature's starting to take the property back, it's time for the city to, to step in and see if we can't help these properties. But this is Patrick and I, I'd like to give him a few seconds to really talk about what he's done over the past few weeks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. But so basically, I have just been in the city, driving around road, every road. And I just have an objective, objective eye looking at the properties. And I basically, when I find a property that I'll consider blight, get the address, take pictures of it. And then I return to the office and I do more, do more research on the property. And then I make my report that includes things like whether it's occupied, if it has any fire damage, what kind of visible damage it has, things like that. And then I will have that report for y'all and help the city determine what are the most severe cases, what needs to be looked at first, and hopefully work on the cases of blight in the City of Tifton.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Yay.
Which is, this is going to be, yeah, great. I looked at one of the examples that Patrick's doing. It's going to be a catalog and we're going to do it per district. So you'll know the number of homes in your district that are, we consider dilapidated. We'll have this to work off of. So it, it'll be a great effort. So Patrick, thank you for being here. What's kind of cool, and I wanted to commend Crystal and Emily. This year, we've used three interns from ABAC.
That's great.
And it's a great relationship and the students did phenomenally well. And Patrick, you're up for graduation here soon, right?
I have, this coming semester will be my senior year.
You'll be done. So, you know, as, as college students here in ABAC, they're getting real world experience, doing things with us in the community. So it really is going to be great. So before you sit down, you know, you go to these little contests and someone has a jar of marbles and you put in a little ticket that say, how many marbles in the jar? You win, you know, 50 bucks. So I'll start with MJ. But tell Patrick what you think, how many dilapidated homes we have in the City of Tifton? All right, MJ, off the cuff. 50.
84.
84. All right. Mr. Johnny?
75.
Okay.
162.
All right. You got that down?
We got the recording.
Wes, how many, how many dilapidated homes you think we have in the city?
I'm going to say 155.
155. Okay. So we're not going to divulge that yet, but when we're done. No, no. I made my guess as well. So.
What was your guess?[1359.94]